I usually get those shots or get whatever they're putting in me. When I got the flu shot, I had the flu for six months.
Ooh.
That was in 1998. I wouldn't haven't had it since.
Oh, my goodness.
I gave about 100, 150 shots for a few days down in the Bay Area, too.
Wow.
No adverse reactions from anybody, so.
That's good to hear. That's really great that you're doing that.
Yeah.
So I see Tom has joined.
Okay.
How are you doing, Tom? Can you hear us okay? I can't hear you. Maybe you're on mute.
He's on mute.
Yep.
Hey, hi there.
All right. Good to hear your voice, Tom. So with that, we've got a quorum and we're a minute past the top of the hour. So I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is the February 4th Planning Commission meeting, 2021. And I'd like to, as always, start with a roll call, please.
Commissioner Kelly.
I am here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Stockness.
Present.
And Commissioner Hopkins.
Here.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening, and thank you, Trevor. So next up, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about the minutes from the meeting from December 16. And then we're going to go to the rest of our agenda, including the approval of the agenda. When we get to that, we have received some public input and I want to, Trevor and I are going to kind of address that as it relates to tonight's agenda. But just in case you were curious, because I know several of you were copied on the, the letter from PAS. And so I want you to know that I, I do, we do plan to address that. But, but first, just real quick, let's go ahead and go through these minutes from December 16. So I don't see any public on the call. Does anyone else see anyone from the public on the call? Let me see, participants. So let's go ahead and just start with the commissioners then. Are there any suggested edits to the minutes from December 16?
I have some comments about the minutes that I wanna, not corrections. But just some things I want to add to it.
Okay, go ahead, Diane.
Okay, so Tom.
Yeah.
Tom, I've got an idea for you. Because you said in the minutes. You know, you, that you wanted more on the website, the city website. Well, most of the information that you will get as a commissioner will come to your email. And people around town will email you. So if you think about it, go, go to your email, not really your, and you don't even have to go to your government email. You could go to your personal. That's what I had them do, give me personal emails. And then city council members, community members. Gabe, Angela will write, you know, to my email. My personal email, and that way I get the info better. And then I also like to be telephone. I don't, and Trevor knows that, and Angela and Gabe. Because I, my computer isn't available for me to get every day and, and look at it, and I'm not gonna do that every day. So anyway, I just thought, for me, Tom, that was a lot easier. Just have it, to my email, all the city stuff.
Thank you. Somebody, I reached out to ask about how to do that, and I've never heard word back, and I just kind of lost, lost, you know.
Well, give Angela a call tomorrow at the city clerk office and she'll, she'll direct it to your personal email.
Yeah, sounds good. I'll take care of it.
I mean, that's really good. Okay, now the other one is on the last, last page, and it's the staff report. Okay, does Okay, so the city manager Eli gets to make the administrative rules for the ordinance. Trevor, is that right? For the STR ordinance?
Yes, the ordinance does have an allowance for the city manager to implement administrative rules to help to help implement the ordinance.
Okay, so does he talk to you about that also?
I don't think any, I don't think there's really, Dan might have put something in place regarding communications and enforcement, but I don't think Eli has put anything forward.
Okay, because in our packet, you know, we're gonna talk about updating, so I was just thinking, you know. With the STR and the Planning Commission people, when, when we talk about the ordinance. And then on the last line, it says she just stressed the need for the commu- commission to move forward with the general plan, water policies, as well as other odd, other projects, including potential OPC. What's that? What's OPC?
I will talk, I will talk more about that a little bit at our, part of our first agenda item.
Okay, okay, and it's a grant for, okay, housing grants, ordinance, resident, and then I wanted to put parking in there, Trevor.
Yes, that's another project we're working on with that.
Okay, I just, it, it wasn't spelled out, and I'm like, it's an issue. Okay, I'm done.
Thank you.
We're fine. I just wanted to add a few things.
Okay, that's terrific. Other questions or comments on the minutes? I didn't personally have anything to Commissioner.
I'll just reemphasize the last, second to the last paragraph where we talk about the planning commission needs to establish a priority list, and then to let the city council and public know what the priorities are. One of the things I, obviously, you're gonna look at tonight, we're gonna look at tonight, is those priorities. And I just want to reemphasize that that's an important thing that we communicate back to the city council so they understand which direction we are headed in. Everyone is in lockstep, if you will, on what is going to happen. Thank you. I move to approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose? No one? Okay. All right, that's, those minutes then stand approved. And our next topic then is tonight's agenda. And so with that, I do want to take a quick pause and let Trevor give us some feedback on kind of how we should proceed this evening, given some of the, given the public comments we received earlier today.
Yeah, and I talked to Eli and and who also spoke to the city attorney, since the letter was directed to him. And so, you know, the letter was a little confusing because it, it said it was about the general plan update item, but it seemed like it was really more about the Trails Committee item and the Trails policy. And so for the Trails policy, I, you know, I, I think that we can still take input on, on these agenda items. But for the Trails policy, I'm gonna suggest that we table it after tonight's meeting. And staff and, and the Planning Commission can also make this as a recommendation if, if they feel strongly about it, too. But I think staff is gonna go back to the city council and, and make sure that the, the Churai are appropriately invited to participate as part of the, the plant, the Trails Committee. It would set up to have a member of, of the Yurok tribe, and they as far as I know, and Cheryl, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but they don't tend to come to the meetings. And so maybe a member of, of the Churai should be the, the Yurok representative if, if they want to participate in the meetings. And then send, send the Trails policy back to the Trails Committee with participation from the Churai. Or, or staff will meet with the Churai separately, whatever, whatever that process ends up being. So I will take input on the Trails policy, but for now, we'll, we'll table that and figure that out. And it might, might end up back at the Trails Committee again at some point. For, for the general plan item, I wasn't expecting action tonight, except for input. I think the next step on that is going to be to send it back to the Coastal Commission with, with all the responses. So the revised copy, since they did have a lot of comments, and we've made a lot of changes to address their comments. And so that will be the next step, so that that won't be in action anyway. And then, you know, hopefully, staff, we can work to, to set up a meeting with, with the Churai and talk about the general plan update and how to move forward on that. So, so I think we can continue with our discussions with, with those outcomes.
Okay, that sounds good. So, so in other words, what we're gonna do then is talk about agenda items 1, 2, 4, and 5. And we're going to not so much make any, you know, concrete decisions as much as discuss and give input. Is that correct? Okay. And are there any questions, commissioners, about what we've just discussed?
Well, I guess I'm a, I, I do have a question.
Please.
Could you clarify again, Trevor? You, you're saying that we are not going to discuss the Trails policy tonight?
I think we can discuss it in terms of, I'm, I'm happy to take input. It's on the agenda. If there's a member of the public that wants to talk about it, sure, but we're, you're not gonna make a recommendation to the council at this point. We're gonna table it until staff figures out whether, you know, it should go back to the Trails Committee or how we're gonna get, get that input from the Churai.
Yes, that, that, that was my interpretation of the letter. That we could still work on it, but as you just pointed out, we would not necessarily make any, request an approval or make any recommendations. And one additional item that I would be very interested in getting some additional feedback on is the last, I'm sorry, the second to the last paragraph of the letter from Mr. Gallegos. And let me just read it. Further any aspect of the general plan and local coastal plan updates respectively that have an impact to the Churai study area or land adjacent to the TSA through zoning and policy shall go before the Churai management team. I'm just a little I would like to have some additional input from the city attorney on that, only because when you look at what we do, almost everything that we are doing in the general plan impacts the study area or is adjacent to the study area. And consequently, if if this directive that to go through the Churai management team, I think we really need to understand what that, what that means in terms of our process moving forward.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thanks for that clarification.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, Commissioner Johnson, so, so, yeah, so again, just to, to then reiterate, so thank you for that clarification. So we will discuss all the items on the agenda. No decisions will be made. We'll be giving input and of course, taking public input as, as well. And I think I echo Richard's comment about needing guidance from our legal counsel on how to proceed. You know, I personally haven't had time to read the entire letter, and I intend to do that. But I also would love to get feedback from legal counsel on everything in the letter.
Who is our legal counsel now? Who's our lawyer now, Trevor?
It's on the
Who?
It's on the letter.
Do the letters of the best to Russ, Russ Gans at the, at the Mitchell Law Firm?
Okay.
Yeah, I hadn't, I'm not familiar with him, Diane, so I'm sorry, I didn't have that name off the top of my tongue, but
I haven't read the letter, so.
Pull up the letter, yeah, right.
Read the letter.
All right, so I think we now have a kind of a plan of action then for, for how to proceed. I do know that we have some members of the public who have joined the call, and so I do want to move at this time to items from the floor. So I'll just read my, my usual statement. At this time, we offer members of the community an opportunity to come to the podium, or excuse me, in this case, raise hands for, to comment up to three minutes on items that are not on tonight's agenda. Please note that pursuant to the Brown Act of California, the commissioners and are not really allowed to discuss at length the topics that are, are raised, maybe more than a brief comment or question, these items that are not on tonight's agenda. But with that, I'd like to go ahead and open it up. Would anyone like to make a public comment? Please, Aaron.
Just wanted to introduce myself. My name's Aaron Hakkinen, and I hope to be appointed to the Planning Commission here at this next city council meeting. And then I'll be an official member of the group come, I think the ninth is our next one, or 17th, somewhere in that window. So that's all, just excited and trying to wrap my head around all this and understand all this stuff. And I apologize, I will drop offline briefly tonight. I had a conflict with my wife. I've gotta go pick up my daughter from a horseback lesson. But I will dial in at that point, so I can still kind of pay attention. So that's all, just wanted to say, hi, welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you. Welcome. Yeah, we're, we're delighted to have you join us and looking forward to, to hopefully, an official membership in the, this elite crew called the Planet Trinidad Planning Commission. Other public comments? All right, I don't see any others, so I'm going to go ahead and move on then. And we'll start with our first agenda item, which is a very robust topic, the 2021 Projects and Priorities. All the stuff that we might have on our plate this year. So Trevor, did you want to start, take us off with the staff report on that?
Yeah, thank you. So, you know, I just, we, we have a lot to get through this year. And so I just wanted to emphasize that, like Richard said. I don't know if we're at the point of having to say, okay, we're gonna work on this first, and this first, and this first. I guess I've kind of got it in my mind, what, what we should be sort of focusing on. And, and that would be the, the things that have deadlines this year. So the SB2 grant would be one of the priorities, and then, and then continuing our, our work on the general plan. But there, and, and, but we've also got, you know, water, water things we've been working on. The STR ordinance review, and, and I guess that's the one that sort of had me a little concerned that that could end up taking a lot of time, and so that, you know, I wanna you know, again, I don't know that we need to set parameters at, at this point, but at some point, we, we might want to think about you know, kind of limiting the scope or, or otherwise you know, limiting the number of meetings or the time at each meeting that we talk about it, something so that it doesn't you know, take away from, from too many of these other things that we're working on. And, and at some point, it might get to the point where the Planning Commission wants to emphasize that you know, these are the things that, to the city council, that these are the things we really need to work on and, and ask for concurrence on that. You know, if we, if we need to start sort of putting some things off till later so that we can accomplish others. You know, and, and so again, like I said, we don't necessarily have to set priorities yet. But certainly, if, if you want to now, we, we can start doing that. But I just want to make sure that, you know, people are aware of this and, and that, you know, we, we because I'm also the, I'm getting more and more applications and calls about applications. So that's another thing that's gonna be coming along this year that, that, you know, in addition to these, these city projects. Just a real quick summary, you know, continuing our, our water planning. So the city applied for some technical assistance for some, some water security planning. I think the city council is going to revisit the, the water issue at their meeting next week, and and, you know, I, I think both short term and long term, the city needs to, to look at options for improving water security over the long term, because Leffinholz Creek may not continue to be a sustainable and reliable water source. So water planning, hazards planning is something we started under a Coastal Commission grant, but we never quite got finished with it. And the city did get approved for a grant from the OPC, which is, is gonna maybe set us back a little bit in, you know, I'm, I'm getting close to being ready to, to bring that part of the general plan discussion back to you guys. But I think it's gonna set that back a little bit, because we need to start with some more public input and, and public involvement before we jump into that again. And I'm, I'm hopeful that that's going to have a, a number of benefits for sort of our long-term planning, including our general plan. Because, you know, as you know, we, we don't necessarily get a lot of input, public input on, on our general plan. So, so it might be a good opportunity to target some issues. And then there's the, the zoning update. That's something that we, we can put off. There's no necessarily any time limit on that. But again, you know, the longer we keep working on the general plan, the more things change. It just, I just really like to try and make a push to, to get through some of this so that we can have a, a more usable LCP, because our, our current local coastal program is, is not working real well. So it'd be nice to get these things implemented. The STR ordinance review, so the STR committee came out with some recommendations for making changes to the report or to the ordinance. So we'll want to look at those, and then how, you know, whether we want to look beyond those or not. A council member Davies had some additional suggestions he wanted considered. But I think there's also some opportunities, some of the suggestions that were made could potentially be administrative rules. Because of course, any changes are gonna have to go through the Coastal Commission. And then we've got our two housing grants, SB2 and LEAP. LEAP has a little bit longer timeline, SB2. We have to spend basically all the money in this year. And the tasks include an ADU ordinance, which I'm, I'm working on and I hope to bring to you in the next couple of months. The city did adopt accessory dwelling unit ordinance a number of years ago, maybe it was 2012. It was around the time we did the first vacation rental ordinance. But the Coastal Commission wanted quite a bit more analysis and studies and information about ADUs, because they'd increased density, and so looking at impacts on coastal resources. And that included water, septic capacity, and parking. And so we've, we've done a lot of water studies. I think we've got the information for that. We've done with the geotechnical studies and the groundwater model for the stormwater project. That also looked at septic capacity. So I think we have that information, and then we're working on a parking study, so, that we're gonna do this year. And if I'm, I'm looking for a volunteer to help me plan that, you know, I'd like to do you know, it's, it's sort of parking counts, and looking at the city, or working on an inventory of parking spaces. So it's basically, you know, picking a few days during different times of the year. So we want to get sort of a typical slow winter, maybe as a spring sort of shoulder season, a typical summer day. And then I'm thinking our last one would be like 4th of July weekend, a sort of a peak kind of parking time, and, you know, getting out there and looking at you know, vacancy occupancy rates for parking, maybe, maybe parking turnover. So I'm working on developing that, and like I said, I, and I'm working with Angela. We're gonna, we're working on a survey that we're gonna get out to people about parking issues. And again, in, in the development of, of this parking study, and welcome some input if anybody wants to participate in that. Other SB2 tasks included residential design guidelines. That could be a big project. So one of the, one of the things the Planning Commission has struggled with is our design review criteria are a little bit subjective. And so developing things that are a little bit more objective, that makes the process a little easier, a little you know, gives an applicant a little bit more assurance as to what, what is going to be approved, for example. So that hopefully will you know, the state is really pushing for increased housing opportunities and affordable housing, so that has to do with that. LEAP tasks include water conservation, since that can be a limiting factor for housing development. Reasonable accommodation program, so people with, with disabilities. The city doesn't have a process for allowing exceptions for disabilities other than a variance. And we've struggled, struggled with that in the past, so working on that. Some, some very specific zoning ordinance updates for compliance with, with, with state law. A lot of those are gonna be fairly simple and straightforward. And then others, so again, you know, I've got applications coming in. I think there's gonna be additional, you know, water issues maybe to look at. You know, we've, we've, as staff, we've been talking about a zoning amendment for caretaker residences. We're gonna need to develop an ordinance for the water shortage contingency plan. There's the OWTS program that's not being fully implemented. So there's a lot of things, and, you know, limited amount of staff and, and time to, to do that. So any, any questions, suggestions? I'm, I'm happy to hear them.
Mr. Stockness has a question or comment?
Trevor, I'll help you with the parking.
Thank you, Diane.
Yeah, and maybe I'll get Aaron to join me, because he lives four, he lives a block away or two blocks away from me. So we can, you know, see the city. We see the city a lot. We see parking issues, okay. So I'll help you and Angela.
Thank you. We have a volunteer. We have two volunteers. All right, so other, I guess at this point, just thinking about these priorities. So questions and or, you know, comments about what resonates in terms of priorities. So Commissioner Johnson? Is that where you're handling?
I think it certainly looks like our plate is full, maybe overflowing. So, so fundamentally, Trevor, you know, you're a one-person band. And when we look at some of the things that we have to accomplish, it's pretty obvious that it's gonna be a real uphill battle, given the current arrangement that we have in terms of meeting schedule and, and, and resources, in terms of, of people that can, can work this. So I, I don't know that we have a solution tonight, but I was thinking in terms of perhaps what we might be able to do. You know, we have done extra meetings in the past. I certainly am willing to do that. I was thinking, sometimes every other week is, is difficult, but maybe if we did it every third week, that would get us, you know, close to, you know, between 15 and 20 meetings per year, which would be a little bit more than what we would normally do. But I am real concerned about having, having enough resources to backfill for you. And, and that, that was my emphasis, that was my reason for emphasizing by reporting back to the city council on, on what our priorities are. On on what our priorities are, because I think it's just as important for them to understand not only the priorities and the schedule for those priorities. But how we're gonna get it done. And the only way we're gonna get it done is with additional resources. And they they need to. Help us and step up and 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 commit to. Providing some of those resources, we'll never get there. Editorial comment, but that's where I am.
Yeah, thank you, and 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 I do have some. Some people at my office that that do help, Ethan's working on the ADU ordinance. And we are trying to hire another planner, but but yeah, I mean. Becky is is taking care of her mom and and won't be working as much on the grants and things and. Yeah, Angela's got her hands full with committees and things, so. Yeah, that is, it's definitely an issue.
Diane, you're on mute, are you? Please. Go ahead.
So how about any Humboldt State? Students? Trevor?
There are internship programs, you know, I don't know what they're doing. Maybe, you know, sometimes interns and student projects can be more work than, you know, what they.
Right.
What they give you. But yeah, I I think in particular for for a. You know, a. A project that has boundaries and and limits, that's. A potential student project. Or, yeah, planning intern could be could be useful for for some things, you know, sending out notices and. You know, things.
Counting the survey numbers, okay, that was just. A resource I thought might be out there. You know, there's still students here.
Is Becky involved with these with these? You know, what what you're talking about here, is that is that part of the hangup that she's not gonna be available?
Well, she she's the city's grant manager and she helps with, you know, organizing. You know, the public outreach and the the reporting and, you know, and making sure that grant timelines and things are met. So she's still gonna be working. On some of those things, but I think, you know. The the grant reporting and things like that she'll continue to do, but yeah, I'm not sure how much she's gonna be helped with outreach and things like that.
Well, I I like grant writing, if I can help there, I'd be happy to.
Great, thank you.
That's terrific, thank you. So I am. I looked at the list and and I share everybody's concern that it it seems like. Quite a a big list for us to tackle with the resources that we have. And so I kind of come at came at it from the perspective of can we can we. You know, prioritize the list, can we schedule some things out that don't need to be done in twenty twenty one? Are there some, in other words, are there some things either either we put more resources on it? Or are there some things we can take off the list? And then if we were to prioritize, what would we really consider to be, you know, kind of high impact activities? That maybe don't require as much effort, I mean, we obviously want to do high impact activities, some of them are high effort. We want to do high impact activities that maybe don't require as much effort. Sort of like kind of a classic sort of, you know, project management matrix to help us prioritize and. And I and I echo the sentiment that the city council will, you know, need to weigh in on our priorities. But I, as I looked at the list and things jumped out at me. You know, water seems to be, you know, something that a lot of folks are very concerned about right now. We need a contingency plan. And we've already started the drought contingency planning, so a water resiliency plan seems to be something that. That that there seems to be a lot of energy around right now. There were over a hundred letters, I guess, to the city council last week, for example, was what I heard anyway. And and so that's there's a lot of energy around that, I think some of the other things. Can maybe be backed up either in terms of timing, so. I'll just give you an example, I don't want to get into too much level of detail, but. For example, the SB two and LEAP grants, where we talked about working on the. ADU ordinances and and some things, there were some dependencies, right? The parking study won't be done until summer, so there are some things that I think we can kind of say. We're not gonna get to this to the second half of the year or until twenty twenty two, simply because. The grant funding hasn't come through or there are dependencies and things like that, so. Wherever possible, if it's if it's not something that's super, super urgent. And I guess I would put the SD, I I know people may disagree with me, but I guess I would put the STR ordinance maybe in that category. Of something that, yes, it's due, but we also have a lot of other things that are due. And that are overdue, like the general plan, so maybe we could push that out. Until twenty twenty two, so. You know, I don't know whether we do like a working session and and kind of, I don't know how. How we approach this, or maybe to your point, Trevor, maybe we don't need to prioritize this list yet. But we, you know, we start to think about as a as a. Planning commission, how we might kind of juxtapose these different things. Does that make sense? So so I guess what I'm wondering is. Do we want to do sort of a working session and really kind of, you know, roll up our sleeves and prioritize this list? Or is it a little early for that and we need to kind of. Get some feedback from the city council first?
I I think you guys should take a stab at it first and then, you know, see concurrence from from the planning commission, I I. I kind of like the idea of of a. Working group, I could. I could start. You know, sort of my a first attempt at a prioritization based on what I see as the deadlines and and the most important things and. Maybe sort of some sort of Gantt chart schedule. You know, something that that we we could look at might might help us. Kind of picture this a little bit better. Yes, Richard, you're the, you're right, meetings every two weeks are are kind of difficult because. We finish a meeting and then I have to immediately get the packet ready for the next meeting. But if we do it every three weeks, then we're off our normal monthly. Schedule, so, you know, I. You know, if if we could.
Let's take it month by month.
Yeah, and I think we can do that for now. I think. You know, if we have meetings in between, you know, we're having the general plan, you know, sort of wor- working session meetings in between our regular meetings and that was. It wasn't necessarily a lot of work for me in between each meeting because we were looking at a big document, we were looking at the same document over a few months. So if it's things like that, then that's easier to to have more frequent meetings. Yeah, I think I. Yes, the the. We can't finalize the ADU ordinance until we have the parking study, but I think. So much of it is just dictated by state law. And that the parking study is really more for the coastal commission to do their assessment, I'm I'm. I'm gonna be really interested in how the coastal commission handles. This because most cities. Have area in the coastal zone and outside the coastal zone, and they meet the state requirements by adopting an ordinance for areas outside the coastal zone. So I don't know how many of these have actually gone through the coastal commission. But but I think the coastal commission does recognize. That. You know, housing is a state priority and and there is starting to be a little bit of a shift. With within that. Agency to to recognize that a little bit more, so. So I think that we can. Look at the ADU ordinance at the same time we're completing the parking study, and then once we have the parking study done, sort of revisit. Some of the final details of the ADU ordinance before adopting it, so. Again, I think that's something that. We're ready to move on and it's, you know, something we have to do in twenty twenty one and. And it's something I, you know, I think we can get started on pretty quickly.
So I would maybe, Trevor, maybe I can partner with you and we can take kind of a first path. You know, what a kind of a prioritization matrix might look like and bring it back to the commission and of course, get public input. I it's it's very old, but I am a six sigma green belt. Very old, but I experienced, but I I can dust it off. And and try to help. Because I think maybe with scheduling and and prioritization, we may be able to get through, you know, a fair amount of this, but. But not, you know, kill ourselves all in the process, hopefully. Is there anything that commissioners that jumps out at you on this list? That you like from a priority standpoint, you just would not want to see it, you know, fall off the plate? Like Commissioner Sastha.
Well, I think we need to get this water security action plan and the water conservation plan done now. And to go into. The applications, because we are a planning commission, we need to look at people that want to do something. And then. And then maybe go to the general plan, I don't. I don't think you guys need to make an. A list, I think we need to do it right now. As a commission, we need to say, okay, let's do the water. And then let's look at some housing permits, then, you know. The next thing, I mean, Richard has been talking about this for a year. He wants a. A setup and I'm I'm with you, Richard, I want. I want to get going, I want to get this water thing done. Get the rain catchers. You know, Medrone can help us with that, and then, you know, we we're obligated to look at residential. Permit requests and designs, and the one down the street is going full force on east, the chapel. They're there every day, rain or shine, and it's looking good. So. Anyway, that's my feeling and and I think the STR. We could even go to their meetings, listen to what they talk about. You know, and. Take it in. And then when we talk, we can think about what what they say. And I see the ADU going later. But I don't know. The general plan, I guess. You you don't have to tell us. I think that's like forever, but the I think the water thing we could get, we could get done. And we could give it to the. City council and that clompus guy is, he's just on fire. He's ready to go and get stuff done, and I I like the council. I think, you know, if we say here, this is our plan, you know, let's do it.
Yeah, definitely, yeah, totally agree, and I I didn't mean to suggest in any way that we'd like go off and make lists versus, you know, taking action on. On these things that are high priority, so definitely agree with you. Richard, did you have something to add, or sorry, Tom, your hand's up?
Ah, yeah.
I wasn't sure who had a hand up first, sorry.
Well, I've just, I mean, I agree with the water thing, I think that's that's low hanging fruit, it needs to be done. But I see the zoning ordinance update, and I don't know what needs to be done. I mean, but. It seems like that's kind of holding things up a lot, isn't it, the zoning, building and grading, and you're gonna need it for everything? From what it sounds like.
Yeah, the the zoning ordinance, I mean, there's the. Minor minor amendments we need to do as part of the the LEAP grant to make it consistent with state housing law. And I think some of those are pretty straightforward to do. But the zoning ordinance needs a really a total overhaul. And and it's gonna be a lot of work and it has to be consistent with the general plan, so in some sense. Yeah, I I'd say that. We can put off because, I mean, I I have worked on it now and again. So I I have some updates that are, you know, getting ready to go, but. You know. We can wait till we get a little bit further along on the general plan, that's something that doesn't have a deadline. Except that, you know, again, our our ordinances are are difficult and unwieldy to deal with, so they. Take up more time, so the sooner we can get them done, then the the easier things get, but but. It's gonna be a big, big job, and I'm not sure that's something we can really jump into this year.
I thought we needed it to be able to get the general plan done.
Yeah, yeah, so well, the the coastal commission will not. Certify the city's general plan until they also have the implementing ordinances to go with it. So they won't actually officially review, but I'm currently working with coastal commission staff and getting their input and getting their comments, one of the things. I was talking with them recently and. I got this from, they've they've had a a working group with. Between coastal commission representatives and then representatives from the league of league of California cities and the league or. Association of county governments or whatever it is that are in the coast. Because it's been a real struggle and. You know, with, you know, particularly dealing with sea level rise and and hazards planning and the idea of managed retreat. There's been a lot of pushback from local governments and so. They've been trying to work together on how to move forward and and one of the things that really struck me about what they were talking about is. One of the problems is that. You know, a lot of these communities have old ordinances, Trinidad has the oldest. LCP in the state. And and so to update it and get everything current, and then the coastal commission wants everything in there and they want everything covered and they want everything perfect. And that's just a really high bar, and so I think they're starting to recognize that. Maybe things can be done a little bit more incrementally. And I I that's something I really hope they take to heart and that that's something that I can work with them on. You know, let's let's get some of this through and some of this adopted if we can. Because what we have just is not adequate, so let's at least make it better and and we'll work towards perfection over time. So I see that as a positive, hopefully we can make some headway that way.
Sounds good.
Richard, did you have a question or comment?
Well, just some clarification, Trevor. From what you said earlier and from what I've been able to read in the staff report, it sounds like. Because SB two has a deadline at the end of the year. This just to clarify, let me just confirm that. For the SB two activities, that would be the ADU ordinance. And the residential design guidelines. Are the two tasks that have to be done in SB by using SB two. Funding by the end of the year, is that correct?
That's correct, and and there was, and then the parking study was another task, but that's a little bit more sort of behind the scenes. And then the other task was actually the housing element, which we ended up getting the technical support last last year. From placeworks, and so we actually have a housing element now, there's a couple of little. Like there was that zoning ordinance for emergency shelters that went along with that, and we haven't processed that through the coastal commission, so that needs to happen. We need to finalize. Tribal consultation, so the rancheria responded that they wanted. Tribal consultation on that general plan update, and so we have to follow through and finish that. And then we have to take it through the coastal commission. So I didn't put that task on here because I see it more of sort of tying up loose ends. As opposed to a a major task, but yeah, so for those four tasks are the SB two SB two tasks.
Thank you, that helps, you know. Obviously, we don't want to do it on city city money if we don't use the grant money, so that obviously we want to. Extinguish those funds this year. So, you know, just very crudely, when you look at that, that that kind of tells you. What your one of the priorities will be for this year. So we throw in a couple of other things. So we throw in a couple of other things, that obviously general plan has to be right there, no doubt, at the highest priority. I will just make one comment about the STR ordinance. While it's, while I don't think that it's urgent that we, that we look at it, but I do think that there'll be a little bit of pushback because if we get closer to the summer season, everybody will want to know exactly what changes are there and if there are going to be any changes, when they, when will they have to be implemented, et cetera. But I like the idea of maybe trying to limit the discussion or at least streamline it to the point where we don't get completely swamped with it, but at the same time recognizing that I, I think there will be some pressure to try to have something. May have something done before the, before the summer season. But, you know, we're big boys and girls, we can probably handle that. But yeah, I see, I see as far as priorities, general plan update and SB two activities, four activities.
Yeah, I, I would agree. And one, one tact, maybe I can work with Eli and, and the city attorney a little bit to see if we can address some of the STR committee's recommendations through the administrative rules. Because even if you guys take action on an ordinance amendment before the summer tourist season, the coastal commission isn't. So, you know. So yeah, so it'd be easier, it'd be easier and quicker to implement those changes if they're administrated, if we can do that administratively.
Sounds like a worthy thing to discuss.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and open up to public comments at this time on the 2021 projects and priorities. Are there any public comments? Okay, seeing and hearing no public comments, I will go ahead and then close public comments. And just to summarize, we are going to take a look at priorities like water, normal permit applications, the, the general plan in an incremental fashion along with zoning, SB two grant funding or things that are, you know, time bound and high priority, and then look at potentially resourcing. And Trevor and I will also spend a little time kind of looking at the list and, and seeing if we can figure out kind of how we could juggle things from a scheduling standpoint so that they're a little easier to tackle. Does that sound about right? Okay, I see nodding, so that's good. With the, with the time lag I'm on, I'm doing okay. All right. Let's move on to the next agenda item, the after the fact permit. So Trevor, did you have a staff report on that?
Yeah, so, yeah, we, we talked about this a couple of months ago and, you know, I, I was struggling to find examples from, from other communities. So, and I, I still, I continued to struggle. And so I, you know, direct, I went directly to coastal commission staff because I know they, they do deal with after the fact permits on a regular basis and, but they don't have clear written policies. It's really, you know, the, the consistent thing I can find is that it's, it's increased permit fees, everything from, from double and, and more. So, yeah, and I've seen some progressive rate structures, the coastal commission charges five times the, the permit fee. Other things, so it's for the coastal commission, it's kind of seems to be a case by case basis and it depends on how involved enforcement was, you know, the kind of resources that might have been impacted. You know, and, and for a development that's, that's permissible under the coastal act, they, they have a, a process and you can go through and you can get an after the fact permit, you just pay five times the fee. But it seems like a lot of what the trouble ends up being is the, the studies and the documentation to show what was there prior. So it's, and, and I know people in my office, I've, I've heard them talk about forensic wetland delineation. So, you know, someone who filled wetlands 10, even 20 years ago, and now they have to go back and figure out, well, what was the extent and, and the quality of those wetlands 10 years ago and how are they going to restore them now? And, and that sort of thing. So that's where I think the real disincentive comes from, you know, and if, if you do something that's not permissible, obviously you have to, you know, take that out and restore the area. But really it's, it doesn't seem to be a set, you know, it's, it's not a punitive process. You know, there's been suggestions in the past that, you know, they're held to a, a different standard or, or not allowed. And I, I just haven't found any examples of that. So my suggestion for now is it can even be an informal policy, but that, you know, the planning commission consider setting fees as, as double the standard permit fee. One question would be because permits are charged based on, you know, the actual costs, which usually tends to reflect the complexity of the project, but sometimes also just reflects the fact that maybe someone's view is impacted and so you get this long public process. So I think the, the planning commission can consider that on a case by case basis. You know, I think just doubling the, I think for a, a couple in the past, it's been doubled the deposit, which is just $750, which, you know, for most people building in Trinidad, that's probably kind of a slap on the wrist and, and maybe not enough of a disincentive. So I think as, as, but for now, I think you can, you know, without a written policy, we can, you know, set, set additional fees as conditions of approval. So that would be my recommendation at this point.
All right, commissioners, questions or comments or opinions on this?
I, I guess, Trevor, I, I understand what you're saying and, and I don't have any trouble with the recommendation. I'm just not sure how you implement an informal policy. So, well, if, if that could be done, so be it. I mean, I, I don't, I personally brought this up as an issue and, and I do want to see it resolved at some point, but at the same time, looking at everything else that's in our dowjor, I, I don't want to necessarily get into a formal policy, but I guess I need a little bit of clarification as to how we, how we implement it if it isn't a formal policy.
Yeah, like I said, I think through conditions of approval and it can kind of be part of the discussion during the hearing as what's appropriate for, you know, that particular project. But, you know, I think, I think it wouldn't be bad to, you know, it might be a very brief written policy that says, you know, standard is sort of double the permit costs unless there's extenuating circumstances and the planning commission can determine that during the hearing. And if you want me to, you know, you could either vote on that now, or if we, if we think it should be a written policy, you know, I could write something up for the next meeting that you could actually adopt. So I think there's, you know, you could go about it a couple of different ways.
I like you writing something up and then when you're in the office, has there been anything already written up with the, the permit fees, any kind of language? No, okay. I like the doubling, I like the doubling thing and then have us look at it depending on the circumstances with your suggestion too.
So I agree.
We don't know, excuse me, we don't know, you know, exactly what happened at the Verizon. You know, we don't know if that's all cleaned up or, or what, and they're not getting any kind of a double fee. Okay, I'm sorry, Cheryl, go ahead.
Oh, no, no, I was just gonna, so Trevor, I just had one quick question about the permit cost ranging from a thousand to 3,000. So are you saying permit cost is not a percentage of the overall cost of the project, it's just related to the hours spent and the complexity of the project, right? Okay. Because one thought I had was a percentage of the project fee, but I think in essence, when we say doubling, we're pretty much saying that, we're saying it's 100% yeah, fee. So I think that makes sense. And double, I wouldn't do five times, I think the coastal commission, that seems, that seems a little high, but, but yeah.
They'd sue us if we did something like that. Really?
It would. So yeah, I think doubling and, and recommending that to the, to the council. And if it, if it is a simple policy or to Richard's point, if it's nothing too complex, and in the meantime, yes, but we could put it in as a condition, it sounds like. So I, I think that makes sense. It sounds like we're, we're all in agreement. Now, Commissioner Hopkins, are you okay with that too? Or do you have a comment? You're on mute, I think, Tom, sorry.
Yeah, I'm in agreement and I think that, but if it affects the view, it should be known that you're going to get hit hard. You know, I mean, if it was worded that, don't do anything to affect people's views, be a good neighbor, or something like that, you know, it's going to come.
It's interesting because I was reading about this too. I, I did some online research and, and really the biggest hit that people take is if they build something and they go in to get an after the fact permit. And to your point, if there's a view shed issue, they have to remove it. So, and then sometimes they have to tear out walls and, you know, show what they've done with electrical and plumbing and so forth. And so the cost for the person could be, you know, the fees that being doubled would be the smallest portion of that. So, so yeah, I mean, it's a really good point about what do you do, you know, you, you're going to have to kind of enforce that, the, you know, you have to enforce your building code, basically.
Well, Trevor, put that in parentheses because view is, is huge here in the coast. That's, that's where I'm at. That's why I'm on the planning commission because I came with the view issue.
It, it is, and I guess, you know, I was just using that as an example of what can sort of cause permit costs to skyrocket. And that might, I was thinking of that actually more as a case where, you know, the planning commission might, might cap the, the, you know, the fine per se, the extra costs. But because, you know, someone doing construction that's going to affect someone's view is likely to get caught very quickly in the process as opposed to someone, you know, doing something down off scenic drive or up Berry Road or something that no one notices until it's done. So, so I, you know, I don't actually expect something that impacts people's views to, to come to you very often because again, someone's going to call on that real quick.
All right, I'm going to go ahead at this time and open up to public comment. The topic is after the fact permit. Are there any other comments or questions from the public on that? Okay, seeing that, I'll bring it back to the commission. Trevor, you have what you need then on this topic?
Yeah, so I'm going to write up some, a brief policy guidelines and I'll bring it back to the next meeting for you guys to actually vote on and then that'll be our, our written policy that people can, we can hand people if they come in for an after the fact permit.
Sounds terrific, thank you very much. All right, all right, we're going to move along. How's everybody doing? I guess we're, we've been in about an hour, so I'll hold off on a break if that's okay and we'll, we'll continue on, but I'll check again in a few minutes and see if we're ready for a break. So the next topic is the trails policy. As we discussed earlier this evening, we received some public comments and we're going to, not that we were making any kind of final decisions, this was a review and discussion, but I just want to emphasize that at this point, we're just, you know, taking some input on what's out there on the trail policy and that that document actually kind of lives and breathes with the trail committee and they'll, they'll kind of take it from here. So Trevor, do you want to start us out with your comments on that?
Yeah, so you guys did see a version, yeah, I don't know, a few months ago, I guess. And then it went back to the trails committee. And I had a lot of comments and, and concerns. And so I, I really, I, I reworked the document quite a bit. I sort of went back to some of the original development of the trails policy because I, I think what happened is it, it started as one thing and it kind of grew, it outgrew itself. Because it, you know, it started talking about recommendations for trail design and I, you know, it just, but it didn't have an, that's not what the document was intended to do and it would need a lot more work to be a, you know, trail design document, for example. And, you know, it had all these code sections that were questionably applicable and it had all these rules that actually weren't in effect. And so I tried to reorganize it and where it made sense, I sort of categorized the policies that were in there as existing and recommended. So where there are existing rules, for example, on trails and then recommended. But I, I think most, you know, most of the meat is in there. I, I think really the emphasis was intended to be sort of maintenance and upkeep and sort of this annual tracking and, and making sure that trails are being taken care of and funded appropriately. Who's taking care of them? What are the guidelines for, for maintaining trails? And so I sort of took it back to that. So, and it's got a description of the trail system, which I, I think bleeds into the, the general plan discussion and how we're going to do that map. Originally I was envisioning that, that the trails policy would have the same map as, as the, the general plan map, but I have, after talking to coastal commission staff, I'm rethinking that. I think we need to make the one in the general plan much more basic and, and basically just trails and not showing the markers and improvements and, and things like that. But that would be appropriate in the trails policy. I took out some of the things on, you know, trail improvements. I think that those, some of those weren't fully vetted, you know, and particularly signage, I think is something that is a project in itself. And so I, I took out most of the reference to signage except the markers. So, you know, a lot of the, the markers are approved and they're in the four by four posts. So I, I left some of the, the discussion in there, but not necessarily recommendations. There's still a few comments and questions I have in there. So, you know, some of the recommendations overlap between sections and so are they in the right section or maybe should they be in both sections? So, for example, if you look on page 12, there's a highlighted section that says provide opportunities for NGOs, which would be non-governmental organizations and community groups to participate in regularly scheduled meetings and events. You know, that's also, that's a maintenance issue, but it's also an outreach issue. Which section should it be in? Should it be in both? So there's a couple of those kind of questions. You know, public outreach, do we want to, you know, strive for, for virtual maps? You know, there's already some pamphlets, but we can work on some additional pamphlets. So yeah, I'm just looking at inputs and then, yeah, like we talked about at the, the beginning, I'll just take your input at this point and then we'll table this and, you know, maybe have the, the city council take another look at the makeup of, of the trails committee to, to make sure that, that we get participation from, from the TRI ancestral society. So I'm, I'm imagining that this document's going to go back to either the TRI as, as a group or, or to the trails committee, maybe with the, the TRI participating on that. So, but I, I will at this point, you know, it's take So, but I, I will, at this point, you know, it's, take public input and, and planning commission input.
Okay, that sounds terrific. Let's do a round, pass the pen for the, amongst the commissioners, with any comments or questions.
Okay, I'll start.
Okay.
Trevor, you did a great job. I liked all the outlining of the, the different trails. I've been on most of them since I've been here 45 years. And I did talk today to Brian from Public Works, because I'm interested in putting a bench up. Because in here, you know, you talked about replacing the benches. And my family is a, you know, native Humboldt County family, and we're not going anywhere. So I would like to get some benches repaired. And they did, the Public Works did put gravel this last late fall around benches, because the bluff is eroding away. And Cheryl, you can probably see that. So I, I think that's one of the most important parts, is to keep the benches and the areas around those main pain. And I didn't ask them what their schedule was, but I probably will, you know, within the next week. Besides that, I wanted to, you know, I wanted to know what the, who does maintain the trails, you know? Two people work for Public Works, you know, and they're out a lot. But I know there's a lot more than that. I thought they were hiring somebody else. So my other main item, or main concern is, I am not a virtual map looker. I would like a city map, like we used to have at the entrance of town, with the, the city map. Because we get so many tourists, right, Erin? We get a lot of tourists. And if they had a focal point right at the shopping center, that had the city, you know, whether it's the streets, but definitely the trails, it's going to be easier. And there's the pamphlet, you know, you've got the, they can find the restaurants. But I've had people try to drive down my driveway if the, the gate isn't closed, because they think that's the way to the Parker Creek Trail. And it's, you know, it's up another block. But I, you know, I know you don't want to deal with signs, but I'm thinking one sign, and maybe the Chamber of Commerce, you know, would put it up again, with the help of the trails committee that, and that, you know, did the, the policy. Okay, that's.
Well, and I think that could be a recommendation to the, the trails committee, to kind of maybe work with the Chamber of Commerce. Or it might also, you know, I was thinking the, the park area might be a good location for a kiosk like that as well. So.
Oh, you mean the Janus Park?
Yeah. So, so maybe that would be a recommendation of the trails committee, is to try and, you know, work on a place and a design, and, and come forward with a proposal.
Okay. There's a lot of other people that are at that Janus Park right now that shouldn't be there. So we've notified the sheriff about that. Okay, that's, that's an idea. Okay.
All right. And I just, I'll just mention in passing that the trails committee is doing a presentation for the city council. And at their next meeting, I think there's 15 minutes on the agenda, and we are going to talk a little bit about signage. So I'm happy to bring that up. Diane, if you're not in the meeting, if you are, that'd be a great time to bring it up to the city council's attention.
Okay.
Other, Richard or Tom, any comments or questions about this?
Yeah, I do. But I thought Richard was gonna go there.
Who wants to go next?
Yeah. Okay. From what I see, I really like the, the maintenance side, and the yearly maintenance to document how things are going to be done. Nice job, Trevor. I really think we should direct people to the website. I say this every meeting, I think, though. Yeah, like to the map, to the, they could then learn the rules. They can learn so much about the city. And even the history of the trails, or the history of the city, or the old town, you know? So anyway, that's my two cents worth.
Yeah, good point. Thank you, Tom. Richard?
Yes, I do have some, just some questions, I think. My, my first question is, I guess on page five, this is a description of the Trinidad Trail System, paragraph four. And Trevor, am I missing something? Where's the Van Wick Trail?
Well, that was, so the Van Wick, isn't the Van Wick Trail included in the Harbor Trail? Or did they not? That, that was, that was my whole point, is we need to, and, and maybe we could do it either now, or as the next agenda item. I think they sort of bleed into each other. But I want to look at figure 10 in that trails map, and get that figured out. And what, you know, I don't know where these categorizations and names come from. They're not necessarily the same names I've heard used before. Some of the trail connections are not included. So, yeah, I mean, the, the boardwalk down Edwards is not included on here. So there's a, there's, I think we really need to work, button that down.
Yeah. I, I, I agree. Actually, Van Wick is listed as part of the Harbor Trail. But as you said, I think most of us are, are used to understanding that there is a Van Wick Trail, separate from a Harbor Trail, if you will. Even though the boardwalk going down Edwards is described in, in one of the trails. So, yeah, I, I agree, that that needs some work. Let me just real quickly go through a couple of comments. The other thing is that one of the, we, we talk about all the different stakeholders, and how we need to deal with the various agencies. And one agency, which I think, I think I would like to see in there, is BLM, which is a federal agency. So we talk about state, we talk about local, we talk about other stakeholders, but we don't talk about the federal. So I think it needs to be added.
Good, good point.
I, I have a little bit of a problem discriminating between what was a recommendation, and what was a policy. And, and I don't necessarily want to go through and, you know, highlight each one. But it, it, in some cases, I, it was a little difficult for me to understand where you were making recommendations for future work, and, and what was already a policy. So just, just a general comment on that. The other, the other thing is, I think there's a couple of other documents, which we may want to look at. And, and maybe you already have. But, you know, back in 2013, a, a committee came together and made the Trinidad Head Study Committee. And they spent a lot of time looking at maintenance of trails, and invasive species, protected species, how to trim trails, how to maintain them. And primarily, of course, they were looking at what, what was going on on the head. But there's a lot of information there that I think overlaps, and, and it might be useful just to make sure that we're at least coordinated with what that report says. The, the other report, or the other, I guess I'll call it report, was the Trinidad, the TRI Management Plan. That again, has a lot of information in it with respect to trail maintenance, all kinds of stuff in, in trails. So those are two documents that, if we haven't looked at them, it would probably be a good idea to, to look at them in more, more detail. I'm going to go through here real fast. Yeah, and I think just one last comment is that, even though this is a trails policy, I think it's really important to emphasize that with this policy has to come funding. I know it's, I know it's embedded in here, but actually, this will not work unless, unless the city council steps up and funds it, because there's a lot of work that has to be done to implement this. So those are my top level comments.
Thank you.
Oh, I thought you were bringing.
So I have a few, just a few quick things. I guess, first of all, having, as a liaison to the trail committee, I will just say that this policy might have been a classic example of, you know, getting, getting outside help from HSU, for example, in this case. And the students did a fabulous job. We did give them those documents, Richard, that you, you described. But I think, you know, it was sort of a, a document being built by committee, in a way. And so it, it became a little bit of a Franken document, where different people are doing different pieces of it. And then I took a stab at trying to clean it up. And in the end, Trevor fortunately has worked her magic, and, and whipped it into something that I think is getting, getting really close. So anyway, long story short, I think, I think we've come a long way. But boy, it was, it needed a lot of work. So anyway, so I just had a couple of really quick comments. I think on the trail descriptions, I totally agree. I think, I don't even remember how those were constructed. And, and it was, I was asked at the time, could we pull the descriptions from the general plan? But we didn't have those yet. So those need to be, you know, mapped. On page, on page nine, there was, I just had a question. Trevor, you, you had a comment that you suggested either including specific regulations, or just remove the vague title references. And I just wasn't sure, I wasn't, I guess I wasn't tracking there with what you meant.
Yeah, sure. So the original, it just said, you know, trail users are subject to Trinidad Municipal Code Title IX, is what the original plan said. And that's really meaningless for most people. So I went through Title IX, and I sort of picked out the things that would apply to trail users. So, and my suggestion is either totally remove the whole thing, including the reference to Title IX, or we include these specific rules.
Oh, that makes total sense. Okay, got it. And then on some of your questions about whether these, the comments or recommendations should be in, in both places or one, I think it kind of depended. I mean, for me, on page nine, I thought the, the comment about trail maintenance, ensure they're maintained in a manner which provides emergency response, to me felt like it should be both in safety and maintenance. But then the, you know, the public outreach point on page 10, beginning adopt and disseminate, I mean, to me, that seems just more like public outreach. So I think it's going to kind of depend. But I don't want to go into too much detail. So let me just see if there's anything else that jumps out at me. Oh, I, there was a, sorry, page, page 17, was there a, a document that could be referenced for best management practices? And I thought the state parks, the California State Parks, I believe, has a document that might be good. The national one is really, really detailed. And then, I can't find it at the moment. But there was a question about how often or when the trail committee, I'm sorry, it's on page 19, the trail committee presenting, or the planning commission presenting to the city council annually about Trinidad Trail Systems. And my comment there was just that the trails committee does present to the city council annually. So that's really probably them versus the planning commission. And that that next, as I mentioned earlier, that next presentation will be at the next city council meeting. So they're kind of, the trail committee has it in their plans to present annually.
Great. I think, and, and I'll reword it, so that that's, that's clear in there, that it's not just the city council holding a meeting, it's holding a meeting to hear the, the annual report from the trails committee.
In this case, it's on their agenda. So it's not a special meeting, per se, it's just an agenda item. But, but that is supposed to happen annually. All right, I, I'm going to go, let me go ahead and open up to public comments on the trails policy. Any comments or questions?
Yeah, Darren.
The only public left here, it looks like. Just a couple.
Yes. No pressure.
Right, no pressure, right? It, it sounds like there's definitely a need to kind of talk about the, the list of the trails, and make sure that everybody has all the trails that we think should be there, listed there, and, and maybe get that out for public comment, just a thought on that. Now then, to Diane's point about signage, and that's been one of my challenges since I moved here, learning, trying to learn the trail system. There's different sinages, and different maps, and whatnot. And I appreciate both the paper maps, having a background in geology, and as a geologist. And then also, I do also appreciate the, the next generation, it's very much electronic and digital, and having a hybrid of that. You know, I'm envisioning a, a signboard at the entrance of town that has our trail system, and then a QR code that they can grab, and then just go right with that, I think is an excellent idea. And to that point, from a signage, and maybe this is too into the weeds for us, for the planning commission, maybe more for the trail committee, but color coding the trails. So for example, if you want to get to a trail head that comes off of Parker Creek, you know, then you follow the orange signs, the orange outline signs, very subtle, very tasteful, obviously not these big massive things, but something along those lines, just as, as an idea for moving forward. So that's all.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Thank you. Okay, any other, well, probably no more public comments. So I'll go ahead and close public comments, and bring it back to the planning commission. So I think we have closed out on the trail policy topic. Trevor, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I, I think that was all great input. And I'm going to work with Eli to, to figure out, you know, what the next steps for routing this are, and make sure your comments are, get to the next group that's going to be looking at it.
Excellent. All right. Let me ask the commissioners and the member of the public. Do you, do you folks want a five minute stretch break at this point? Or do you want to continue to rock and roll? Who wants to, anybody want to break?
I'd like five minutes. I could use a body break.
Okay. All right. So five minutes, we'll be back in five minutes.
Seven thirty?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks like about seven thirty-two-ish.
Okay, thanks.
All right, we're just about ready to roll. Commissioner Stockness is probably eating our dinner, like I was. I have all this stuff from this Italian restaurant sitting here. Chicken marsala, pizza, chopped salad. It's like, just smells waf-.
You're making me hungry.
It's like wafting over here. Okay. All right, well, let's give it another minute or two, wait for Diane, and then we'll get started on the general plan update. Aaron, can you run down there and knock on her door?
I was just thinking I could be on the front door, right?
We'll turn on the tsunami alarm, that'll get her.
While we're waiting, it looks like Arcata passed the vacation rental ordinance.
Oh.
And they reduced the.
To cap it?
Pardon me?
Was it to cap it, cap the rentals?
Yeah, they capped it at a hundred units, which is, which is 1.2% of their current housing stock. And the cap does not apply to owner operated vacation rentals. I guess that just happened. Yeah, I guess that happened tonight.
Oh, interesting, thank you.
And I think they, so they lowered it from what was originally, I think it was going to be 120 or 125.
125, yeah.
And, but, but they're allowing everyone who has one now to get a license. So it's going to start higher than that. So that's what, which is what Trinidad did.
Grandfather of men and, yeah, from there, yeah.
So if we did 1.2%, how many, how many houses do we have? Like 300?
About 220, 230, something like that.
Okay. And we limited to 17 right now, isn't it, or something along those lines?
Well, it depends on the zone.
Oh, okay.
So it's, it's, the, the only zones with caps are the UR zone and the SR zone. So the two residential zones have caps.
Oh, okay. All right.
And I believe, and I believe there's actually a license available in the, in the SR zone.
Oh, okay. Well, that's good to know, because I want to, I don't think I'm in a SR zone, I think I'm in some sort of special SE environment. Yeah, I'm in a, I'm in a unique SE environment. Diane.
So I missed what the talk was about the fees and the money. Was it the STR fees or what?
Richard, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
We were talking about Arcata just passed STR ordinance, and we were talking about that.
Oh, I know they've got, they've got that big housing thing that's going to start 76 units or something in Arcata. So that'll be exciting.
All right, we are ready to move on to our next item, the general plan update of open space, the conservation element and open space and rec element. And so Trevor, if you wouldn't mind kicking us off on that with a.
Yeah, so a lot of it has to do with the mapping and trails, the descriptions at this point, which, yeah, again, plays into the trails policy. I, I realized that I was reading through my staff report, I did not include an attachment of the coastal trail map, like I said I would, I apologize for that. But I will, I can, I can email that to you, or you could Google it right now, the, the Humboldt County Coastal Trail Implementation Strategy. It, it does show a quite different route than what is currently mapped on Figure 10. So I will, that's, that's kind of just making sure it's, it's consistent, although really the, the city coastal commission has guidelines for the coastal trail, but it's really implemented by the local jurisdiction. So, you know, the city, even if it's mapped some way, if the city feels, you know, strongly it should be mapped a different way, we, we could talk about that. But I will make sure that's mapped, at least is currently, and, and the coastal commission is actually working on coming up with a uniform statewide map right now. So I'll, I'll, I'll work with them on getting that information. And then, so in addition to the trail descriptions, let's see, it looks like I had a couple of comments and questions for, if you have any input, you know, it looks like in, in the actual policies themselves, if you had any, I, I gave you a clean comment, a clean copy, so it doesn't have all the comments and responses, but if you have any additional comments on those policies, there's a couple of questions about, you know, whether things should be policies or programs, we've had that discussion before, so we can talk about that. But, but really I want to focus on, on Figure 10. So, and I do think that, you know, we should minimize what's on the map that goes in the general plan, because that's, that gets certified by the coastal commission and then it's very difficult to change it. And certainly, you know, any, if the city is going to require easements along trails or, you know, new trails, those things have to be documented in, in the LCP to be able to implement that. So we want to make sure any proposed trails are on there. Yeah, then there's the issue of, of trail closures, which I don't think now is the time to address that. That's a much larger issue. It's going to be, you know, that's going to be a process, and I think we should, you know, just stick with the existing trails, because we can't, we can't submit a, a trails map that eliminates any trails from what's existing certified in the LCP without, you know, giving the coastal commission a, a lot of analysis. So, you know, Van, Van Wyk and Galindo, and so I did, that's not, I don't want to, you know, try and address that right now. The trail markers, I think, you know, I like the idea of having the trail markers and having them numbered, you know, for people to reference what trails are what. But then it makes it, if we want to add markers or change the numbering or, you know, then it's certified as part of the LCP, so it makes it difficult to, to change. So, but I do think we should include them, you know, so for the, the Figure 10 for the general plan, I think we should take off benches, bike racks, markers, leave the trails, leave the vista points, maybe add a bike route, or any proposed bike routes. Trinidad doesn't really have any official bike route, so we can talk more about that as part of the circulation element. But that's something to keep in the back of your mind. But I would like to identify these trails somehow, whether maybe color coding them on the map by name, or just adding the names on the map, but I'm, I'm open to suggestions for that. In terms of additions, I added, I'm, I added the, from Galin, from Galindo, the intersection of Van Wyk and Galindo, I added, you know, out Van Wyk to Edwards and then down the boardwalk, that was not on this map, so I would add that as an existing trail. A connector, I would add a connector from Underwood down Hector to Edwards. Yeah, I think that's a, an existing connector. Let's keep things as connected as possible. The McConaughey Trail down from Scenic to the beach at McConaughey Mill Creek is a proposed trail that we've talked about before, but then I was also, the land trust has talked about doing a new trail through their, the Growth Grove property that they have up there. And, you know, there, there's, I think the primary advantage that maybe Richard can speak to it some more is, is if there could be parking at the trailhead, because, because the Growth Lane Trail does not have parking up there on Scenic. And then lastly, I, you know, I thought the way the trails were drawn around the harbor area parking lot was a little messy. Like currently it goes along the north side of the parking lot, you know, down to the pier in Galindo, but that's where boat trailers park. So it seems like coming along the south side where there's no parking, like along the restrooms and stuff, makes more sense, because then you're not dealing with cars backing out and trying to park. And then instead of going straight across the, the gravel parking area for State Beach, it seems like it should go along one edge or the other. You know, I don't, I don't have strong feelings.
And it's all potholes now. Trevor, there's no gravel.
Yes.
It's a mess.
Yes.
Okay, that's just a tidbit, all right.
That, that, the intent, you know, we're still trying to work out some, some landowner agreements. It's, it's gotten a little messy with, with both the cities and the rancheria stormwater projects down there. But the intent is, as part of those projects, that, that parking lot is going to be regraded with some drainage improvements and fix, so hopefully it, it won't do that every winter like it does now.
So what the green is, what are the green on our map?
So the green highlights is where I added.
Okay.
Or, or modified.
Okay. So did you do the Underwood down with the state trail? You know about that?
You cut out there, can you repeat that, please?
Okay, from Underwood, there is a trail down to the State Beach, or the State Park Trail that comes out of the State Park.
Yeah, so that would be from marker nine to eight.
Oh, okay, and, okay. Thank you. Yeah, I go on that trail a lot, but I didn't go over far enough. And I think parking is going to be an issue on Scenic. You could talk to Cheryl about that. Do you own any land up there, Cheryl?
Honestly, that, one of the thoughts that went through my mind was just what a beautiful grove of trees there are up there. I wouldn't, I would hate to, I don't know where the parking would go, but I would hate to see the trees cut down to make a parking lot. But, but having more, having access down through Parker Creek or whatever is, you know, great, you know, the more access we have, the better.
Well, instead of parking on the road, because when we went to Tahoe about summers ago, it was awful. It was like one lane, because there were cars on both sides of this skinny highway and everybody wanted to get down, you know, to the Emerald Bay Trail to get down to Emerald Bay. It was.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think, I think to the point, I, I agree. I think of parking in general, just, you know, having a place, so in our signage or in our maps and our trail guide, saying where you can and can't park and just being really clear about it. Because I think people are confused. I mean, people come down Growth Lane and park in front of our gate, you know, and, and some people, we, you know, we, we have them come on down and turn around, some of the elderly people that are trying to get to the trail and so forth, but they don't know, you know, where, where it's okay to park.
I want a parking lot behind Murphy's, where they charge money, and I'll be the money collector. And then, you know, with Aaron, Aaron, Jennifer and I can, or maybe we'll train your daughter. Well, they have those kiosks, you put it in, but people are parking there all the time, all summer.
Yeah, yeah, they are.
Even this winter, there were like four or five cars there last weekend when it was sunny, and I know they were going, you know, down the Parker Creek Trail.
So I kind of like the idea of taking off all the, the markers. I think it makes it pretty busy and keeping just the California Coastal Trail piece, you know, where there is parking, color coding, I like Aaron's idea of color coding the trails and, and then aligning that with the names and keeping the vista point, so, and, and the connectors, and perhaps the proposed trails, although if it's, that's a tough one, because the proposed trails, you know, until it's really real, I don't know if that, it may just cause more discussion than it's, than it's worth, if it's not really something that's going to happen. But anyway, that's my two cents. So Richard, Tom, any thoughts? Richard, do you want to go first this time? Tom went first last time.
Just, just very quickly.
No, just, just very quickly, uh, comment, yeah, I agree, um, I I think that, um. Based on what I think where we are with some of the proposed trails, I think we should just take them off. I don't think that 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 gets us anything, um, uh, of any benefit. And removing the markers, um. Uh, that's probably acceptable as well. I like the idea of color coding, uh, uh, absolutely, uh, so, yeah, I'm, I'm in alignment with those comments.
Tom, any thoughts? On the map? You're on mute, sorry. I can't unmute you, so.
Yeah, thank, sorry about that, I agree totally, um, color, all that. Um, I'm looking at the parking lot down there at the pier or, um. Uh, I'm kind of wondering why a trail doesn't, or there isn't a trail that goes up the road. Also, that, just to, to avoid that little, uh. It could be a handy, you know, it's just to tell people you can go up that road and get the same thing. As going up that, the steps. I like going on the south side by the bathroom, that makes sense. Um, yeah, I'd keep it as simple as possible for the coastal commission. And that's it.
Diane?
Markers, you mean the signs that say trail?
You're sorry, repeat that Diane, you cut out, can you repeat that, you cut out? Your question.
The trail markers, is that the sign that says trail?
She's just talking about taking it off the map, right, the.
Yeah, but physically, it's the four by posts that have arrows and say trail, yes.
Yeah, those little posts, right, that have the arrows and some of them say trail and some of them, you know, point one way or the other.
So you want the physical ones to stay, but the ones on the map not?
On the map for the general plan, but we're going to have a, a more detailed map in the trails policy. That's going to have the markers and the benches. On it. Okay, well, and maybe in restrooms and parking, maybe.
Okay, uh, some of the benches are, that are on the map are not there.
I, I was going to ask, I, I think this needs to be ground truth again.
Yeah, it's, there are lots of them, at least four that I counted that aren't there.
And I'm not sure there's any bike racks anymore. Um, and I, I think that's nuts.
There's, I think there's still one by, um, Salties and, and, um. That parking area on the other side of Salties, there's, I think there's a bike rack there. I'll check it out when I'm doing my deputy Diane stuff.
Um, alright, I didn't see anything else on here, so, um. Let me open to public comments, Erin, did you have any, any comments you wanted to make?
Just, I, I just want to say I, I like the idea of the less is more and not tying our hands with whatever is getting into the hands of the coastal commission. Then internally as a city, we can do our own document that has more detail on it and more layers, I think it's a brilliant plan.
Okay, thank you. Alright, I will close public comment and, um, I think we, uh, Trevor, any other questions? You need?
Yeah, um. So, so one thing to really think carefully about the proposed trails. Maybe it doesn't matter so much for the. The growth lane, the growth Grove Trail, because that's land trust and city property probably. But the McConaughey Trail, if, if there's an interest in having a trail there. We need to have it on the map because. If it's not, well. I can ask the coastal, I can ask the coastal commission about that, um. Whether it has to be on the map, because, because under the coastal act, it's just if you develop and you're between the sea and the first public road. You have to provide access and that, and and then it's up unless there's nearby access, so. Maybe we can do it on a case by case basis, but I just don't want to miss the opportunity of having that on the map. And when, you know, someone goes to redevelop one of those properties on one side of the creek or the other, we can require an easement. Um, for that trail, if, if that's desired and, you know, would require more studies as to whether that's geologically and environmentally appropriate. Um, and traffic and and whatnot, but, um, if there is an interest in having a trail down there on the south side of the city. Um, you know, I think we should keep it on the map.
Is it a foot trail right now?
Is, no, it's not.
No, is it like?
Go ahead, Diane, sorry.
Steep, is it a steep grade going down?
Yeah, I'd say fairly, you know, and it would, um, you know, we did on the property. To the n- north, um, they did some unpermitted work a number of years ago. And and part of the work was they put in their own trail. Um, down there, um, that we made them take out and restore, um, funnily enough. Um, but, uh. Yeah, so it's, it's doable, I, I, you know, it's steep in portions, but it could, you know, go back and forth a little bit maybe, or have steps.
So, Richard, what do you think, it should be on the map?
You're on mute, Richard.
Um, I think whatever, um, is the most expeditious way to deal with the coastal commission, I'm fine with. And I'll, I'll look to you, Trevor, to, if, if you want to talk to the coastal commission staff and understand what we need to do. Um, I, I would, uh, I'll, I'll go with that.
I agree, yeah.
Is there a desire, or do you think, is there a need to have a trail down there?
There is a need, this is a tourist area, they're everywhere. They're going over the bluff, they're going down by the old lighthouse, they're making it where it's all supposed to be weeds and grass there. Somebody was shoveling it the other day to make the walkway come back up again, so they could walk that way. And that's where the benches are missing, um, Trevor, right in that area, if you're in town, you can take a walk over there. Call me and I'll show you. So I think we should mark it. Because they're going to go over the edge anyway. Because that's, you know, this is where we live, by the ocean.
Well, that's.
Okay.
That part of scenic is very challenging, like there.
Oh, I know, I won't go there.
Well, and that's what I'm saying, and and then if, 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 if indeed we're required to have access with the, uh, parking, et cetera. That'll never happen.
Okay.
Um, I guess I, I would like to hear from the staff and if they say one way or the other, that's fine. But I don't see that happening for a very long time. So.
Will they visit the site, Trevor? The coastal commission staff.
I guess it depends on the circumstances and the project.
Well, because it is so, um, fragile on scenic, they need to go to the site. You know, when we did the STR ordinance. Over half of them had never even been to Trinidad. You know, I was ready to throw a snowball at them, but I didn't have any, okay.
Alright, um, let's move on to our next agenda item, which is also a general plan update. And this is the circulation element.
Wait up, I'm sorry, one more, um. How do we want to name and categorize the trails, like Richard was saying? Are we going to have harbor trails that are, include Van Wick? Um, I mean, because, just because it's been called Van Wick, doesn't mean we have to call it Van Wick. I mean, I, I do sort of like having. You know, the, the Old Home Beach Trails, those are kind of a, they're a discreet, um, set of trails. The Trinidad Head Trails are a sort of a discreet set of trails, the state park trails are sort of a discreet set of trails. Um, so, yeah, so how? Um, how should we? Categorize them, so like, for example, if I'm going to color code them, um, to describe them in the text. Um, what, what trails go with what group? Um, and what are we going to call them?
So I like the idea of the destination, um. You know, you're, you're basically saying it's a harbor trail, it's going to take you to the harbor, descriptive, so I always like descriptive names. I will say that, um, there was a discussion I brought up, sort of, maybe we should, you know, rename trails. In my naivete, um, and, and was told in no uncertain terms that these trails have a lot of history. And specifically those that are named after people, we wouldn't want to change them, so grouping them. You know, was one thing based on like where you're headed or descriptively, but the name of the trail itself, you know, for example. People were not too keen on, on, uh, exploring that, at least at the time. Anyway, um, Diane, I think you were going to say something, I was just.
I would absolutely not rename the trails. The history's there, people have been coming in, coming here for years, they know the trails, they know where they are, whether they're. It's Old Home Beach. Or the Harbor Trail or State Park Trail, they need to just stay, the Trinidad Head. They need to stay as they are named, Axle Ling, Axle Lindgren's Trail, the wagon road, there's still wagon road. Parker, yeah, they need to stay how they're named and then do whatever color code you want to do, maybe. Scenic Drive has. I don't know, they're all city trails.
Black.
So, but, so here's a question, though, we don't have to change the names, so we could categorize them, so. Old Home Beach Trails includes Axle Lindgren, Parker Creek. Um, yeah, Old Wagon Road and Growth Lane.
So I like that, because that tells you, I can take any one of these trails and I'm going to end up at this place. And that's what people ask often, right, the people that get lost, they're trying to find, you know, it's the way to the bead, you know, kind of thing.
Okay, that, that sounds good, but we just can't change the name.
Right.
The history buff, Scott Baker will be after you.
So, so Van Wick would then be part of the Harbor Trails, is that correct? What about Underwood, is Underwood its own thing or is it part of the State Park Trail?
I think it's part of State Park.
I, I agree.
Well. It's on, um, private property. Underwood.
That's all, that's all on public right of way.
Oh, okay. Well, then you're going to go down Underwood and think it's part of the state park and the homeowners aren't going to be happy. I would leave it as Underwood Trail. Because it's off of Underwood, which is a named street, you know, in town.
But it, but it connects to, but if Van Wick Trail is going to be part of the Harbor Trail system. It makes sense to me that Underwood Trail would be part of the State Park Trail system, because it takes you to the state park.
To the state park.
Okay. Oh, you mean when you're doing the grouping, just grouping, yeah. I can do that, I just didn't want you to rename it.
No, 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 I won't rename.
Other comments, uh, questions about this? And.
Oh, here's another question for you, um. What about, um, Edwards from Van Wick to Galindo and down? The part of Galindo that has a, a sidewalk, is, should that be identified as part of the pedestrian trail system?
I'm not sure I know what part you mean, so you're talking about the Galindo Trail?
No, well.
To the harbor?
From, from Edwards at Upper Van Wick and continuing down Edwards. And, and then down Galindo where it's not currently marked.
Oh, I see what you mean.
Well, that's part of the Van Wick Trail, or the beginning of it.
But then it goes down to Galindo, so it's really more Edwards, Galindo. I think it's just an extension of the Galindo Trail, but.
Yeah, I, I would actually include it, because, you know, there, there is a walkway, we've talked about a sidewalk, you know, I think that. I, I think I didn't, I. I think I'd lean towards including that.
There, there's no sidewalk, there's, it's just grub, I mean, it's asphalt.
Yeah, but there's a, there's a shoulder walkway on Edwards and then Galindo does have a sidewalk in that part.
So let me, um, I know, I think Erin had a comment to add to this, so I'm going to open to public comments, Erin, did you? Did you want to add something?
Opening to public comment, uh, yeah, just, I, I like the concept of color coding by destination. And then obviously preserving the history with the, uh, the names of the trails, I think, I, I really appreciate that. Uh, but I think color coding by destination, what beach it's going to, kind of what the harbor, that kind of already makes a lot of sense. And I think will allow folks from not in the area to really wrap their heads around, I want to get to the X beach. Well, take any of these trails and you'll end up there, maybe different ends of it, but you'll end up there, so that's all.
Okay, closing public comment, and, uh, Richard or Tom, did you have any, Tom, did you want to add something?
Are you, are you discussing that steep hill right there by, that goes up towards the Marine Lab?
No, no, but we should talk about that, but. Go ahead, Trevor, you can explain it probably better than I can.
Yeah, no, just from, um, Galindo, um, east to up the intersection with Upper Van Wick. So like where they were going to put the sidewalk for the, um. Van Wick Connectivity Project, um, that the council was talking about late last year. Um, not the steep part between lower Van Wick. Like above the walkway, yeah, no, I, you know, that's, that's too narrow, there's no shoulder, um, I would not direct people there.
So you're, so a map, it would be be- between marker three and marker thirty-two, right?
That's correct, and then, and then over to marker five, thank.
And then over to marker five, so if you look at three to thirty-two and then over to five. What Trevor's saying is that could be part of a trail, if it was Galindo or whatever we wanted to call it. Or Edward. But it, it could be a way that you would direct people, and I, I go that way all the time, so that makes sense to me. Uh, yeah, so.
Yeah, I'd get them, I'd get them off the main streets.
Yeah. Uh, just for, just for laughs, I drove down there one day and, um, I was just curious about what it, you know, what it was like. People walking down that hill on Edwards and there was a one, just a woman was standing like in the middle of the street. She literally walked down kind of the middle of the street and that was, you know, anyway, it was not safe, basically. Um, and then just to, this is not necessarily relevant to discussion, but I'm going to mention it anyway, Tom mentioned it as well. But, um, below the lab, and I talked to the state parks people about this, below the lab, there's, there's, uh. Uh, what do you call it, social trails, right, where people are creating these trails, they shouldn't be there. It's, it's extremely unsafe and it's eroding the bluff and it's, it's something, anyway, I will continue to bring up to them. Because if they replant the vegetation, then people can't get in there, but you could literally just walk right off the edge of the cliff, it's so bad. Anyway.
Or we need a fence.
Yeah, you need something.
I'm trying to get a hold of the state park.
Are we off on a tangent, Richard, sorry, okay.
They need to do some maintenance there, some brush, brush maintenance.
Okay, just bear with me, guys, it's like midnight right time now, so. Alright, I will wrestle this in, okay, I, I, Trevor, do you have everything you need on that topic? Alright, I'm going to move us along then, so the final, uh, item for tonight is the, uh, circulation element. And responses to the coastal commission staff comment, so Trevor, if you want to kick us off on that, we'll break through.
Yeah, so this is, um, you know, something that, um. You know, this is the kind of item that would be great to continue to a meeting in two weeks, but we already have a meeting in two weeks. You know, one of those in between meetings because we're probably not going to get through it all. And I I didn't even, the circulation element's pretty long. So I haven't gotten through. I've only gotten through the, you know, sections A, B, C. D and F. I guess we're missing an E there, aren't we? That'll be something to fix. But so I'm just working my way through. The Coastal Commission comments and responding to comments and then also, you know, making it consistent with some of our more recent discussions on the general plan. And, you know, so this will be a continuing discussion. So I'm I'm happy to take whatever input you have at this time. And then also looking at. The circulation map, which needs some updates on parking, which we can. You know, we're collecting that that information as part of our parking study. I'm doing an inventory. And then, you know, I'm thinking. Some somewhere we should maybe designate a bike route through through Trinidad. And, you know, whether that shows up on this map or the recreation map or both, that's something to think about in terms of maps. So, yeah. There's. Well, I did highlight a couple of things. I think, you know, environmental justice, I'm still sort of trying to figure out. Where and how. We should address that. It was something I had in the circulation element because it is mentioned specifically in the state's general plan guidelines. But Trinidad isn't required to specifically address environmental justice. Because we don't have any disadvantaged communities in Trinidad or immediately adjacent. Although West Haven has been in the past. The the incomes have have risen in the last few years, so it no longer really qualifies as as under that eighty percent of this. The median state income. But, you know, north to Oric does. But one of the comments from the Coastal Commission was, you know, addressing equity in access. You know. You know, we've we've talked about, someone brought up fees for parking and that's something we have to be very careful of. You know, eliminating parking because that's a, you know, an access issue and ensuring that, you know, visitors from all walks of life. Can still participate and have equal access. Parking in Lou is is something that I wanted to bring up and want you to to specifically think about. And then. Street improvements. So there are, you know, the Coastal Commission pointed out some conflicting policies that say, oh, we're we're going to. Minimize street improvements. And then in another section, it says, yes, we should have sidewalks and pedestrian improvement. So so what I sort of started to do was to suggest that we have improvements like sidewalks. And bulb outs and some of those things on the. Primary, primary and secondary collectors, which would be Main, Trinity, Edwards primarily. Stagecoach, scenic, Patrick's Point. But then the green streets on that map, the local streets, we would continue to minimize curbs and sidewalks. And other kinds of improvements. So those were some specific things I wanted you to think about. Oh, and scenic routes, whether we want to consider designating scenic routes. It adds kind of another layer of of regulations that I'm not sure we want to get into. And then roundabouts. The Coastal Commission pointed out that the environmental assessment for the. The hotel, the Ranteria's Hotel, said that the city doesn't want a roundabout at the entrance to town. Because it's not compatible with the character of the city. And I don't remember that ever being. The city ever acting on that. And so I, you know, I wanted to get your input on, you know, whether we should. You know, mention that roundabouts are compatible. You know, I think if there's space, I think a roundabout is. You know, it could be a great solution for that crazy intersection at the entrance to town.
Except for the big trucks.
I mean, we have. Wait, like if you do low, if you do the center of them low, that trucks can drive over them. There are ways to to make that work.
All right, comments, Richard?
Oh, well, I was just going to comment on the roundabout issue. I'm a little hazy on this. But I thought that. Ten fifteen years ago, that the city engineer evaluated roundabouts. Both at the intersection of Trinity and Edwards. And also at the entrance to the to the city. And I do recall very clearly that for a roundabout at Trinity and Edwards, there wasn't sufficient room. We couldn't do it. And I thought that after looking at what needed to be, what they wanted to do for a roundabout at. The entrance to the town, that they didn't have sufficient room as well. Now, the whole idea of a roundabout came about, you know, you made a comment in here. You didn't where you didn't understand where this quote came about. Roundabouts. Well, that's that's from the Ranteria's. Project study, design and product and project development. Support document, which they did back in a couple of years ago.
Twenty twelve, yeah, or twenty oh nine.
Yeah, if you if you look in that document, they have alternatives which they put together. Not the city, but what they put together for how to deal with traffic at the entrance to town. And it's worthwhile to take a look at that. And and I don't recall that a roundabout was even included at that point. But there were multiple lanes that were going to be included. Multiple stop signs, stoplights. It got very, very complicated very fast. So that's just my recollection that a roundabout in either of those places was just not feasible. But that, I admit that that was, that's way back in the back of my mind. And we we probably should touch base with the city engineer to see if he has anything on that. But all those comments come from not the city, but from the Ranteria's effort.
Yeah, and then and and, yeah, but it it seemed to imply that that's how the city felt about it. In in the EA is what the, is what the Coastal Commission was saying, that the EA seemed to express that the city didn't want a roundabout. And I thought that was strange. And that didn't, yeah, and I I did touch base with the engineer. Because I remembered the same thing that they evaluated roundabouts and that there wasn't enough room. So I I did, I talked to Josh and Steve. And Josh sent me sort of a preliminary design that they did for the main entrance to town. And. They it never got any further than sort of a conceptual, but it seemed they didn't see that there was any. You know, red flags on that sort of conceptual idea for that.
Okay. Good to know.
So I love a roundabout. If there was room for them, I would be all for it. I wanted to just comment quickly on the environmental justice aspect because we've talked about this before for the general plan. Because we're not required, I'm inclined to leave it out because we just have so much to do on the general plan. But if we could put something in about equity of access, if it would fit somewhere else, that might be a good solution for that. And and, you know, please don't take this to me that I'm not for environmental justice because I am. But if we could, yeah, maybe fit that in, that might save, save us some time. Oh, and I liked, Trevor, I liked your idea about encouraging things like sidewalks and bike lanes. And so forth on the collector streets. Because I, you know, I personally, I do like to have a sidewalk, especially on a busy street. I think it's nice for safety and I think it it just makes it easier for walking and and running to kind of delineate between where the cars go. And where the pedestrians go. It just seems to make sense on busy streets, so. I think that's all I I had. Any other comments or questions and all?
I I second, I second what you said about environmental justice. Because it's just going to open up a can of worms, but we need to, some little section or sentence somewhere in the plan. You know, that just states equity. And the other streets, like where I live on Main, I mean, on View and Ocean, there's no. There's no room for sidewalks or bike lanes. And they're, the main thing they could do is get the white lines. So that, you know, the property owners have protection. Because, you know, we don't have the fish feed, but we have different people parking, whether they're construction trucks. Or, you know, visitors and they're in the middle of the street. It's actually the street that they're parking on and not, you know, close to the home. So that's, that's. A place where the bicycles wouldn't be able to go and they and when they do go, they're in the middle of the street. They take over the, you know, the whole road. They're every day out and about. So I think, I don't know if we can have a sign for what they're going to do. Seem to be okay. The ones that bike around town, they're in and out and. Avoiding cars, I guess.
Yeah. Tom, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I I like what you said about the the environmental justice. And I'm wondering why we're even considering roundabout. I mean, it's already a roundabout pretty much with stop signs. It's it's seems to be working. Do we need to really open up a can of worms there?
No.
I I think I think it was the, I think it was the volume of traffic was expected to go up with, you know, more development. And I think the other thing is some people feel like it's not a a super safe intersection. Because it's a three way and people don't seem to understand that three way stop concept sometimes. And I mean, I find they're pretty good about it, but occasionally, I usually, I turn left there all the time on to scenic. And it's, you know, I would say probably twenty five percent of the time, people just, you know, don't recognize that you have the right of way, but.
Well, and it's the tourists and it's horrendous in the summer. It's just horrendous. You could sit at the Salty's and just pray that they don't run into each other or the service station.
Um, okay, let me open to public comments. Aaron, do you have anything? Okay. All right, closing public comments, Richard?
Yeah, just just three, three things real fast. With respect to the traffic numbers, again, I refer to that PSR that the Ranteria developed. There is a huge amount of traffic information in there and and I I just make, I just, we should make sure that the the numbers that we're using are consistent. If only so that we don't create controversy at some other point in the future. Uh, the second thing is that HCOG, you know, has a bicycle, we'll call it plan. And we should maybe reference that in terms of whatever we would propose for a bicycle route. Is consistent with what they have have in place. And then the third thing also with respect to HCOG is that we talk somewhat about transportation needs. And I I think we should reference the annual unmet transit program. That the Social Services Technical Advisory Committee does every year. And because that evaluates unmet transit needs and then makes makes decisions on what they can and can't do in terms of improving transportation.
Great suggestion. Okay, any other comments? Trevor, do you have what you need from us on that?
Yeah, I think so for now. Again, I think this is going to be a continuing discussion, so I just encourage you to. You know, look through the comments and responses and see if there's anything that jumps out at you. You know, looking at the the policies, the categorization of of the policies, whether they conflict with each other. So just continue to keep, keep looking at it. And, you know, you can always email me comments as as well at this stage. And but I'm going to, you know, continue to bring this. I'm going to continue to work through the circulation element, continue to bring it back to you. You know, probably for the the next several meetings, it's it's got a lot of stuff in there and of course it ends with water, so. And and that's obviously a current topic, so. So, yeah, just continue to. To review and think about it.
All right. Thank you, everyone. So we're at a point in our agenda where quickly we go through any commissioner report. Are there any reports from standing committees? Diane?
The SDR committee is making their meeting dates for the year. And I don't have a copy of them yet, but there'll be four. And they're going to be the la, I think the last Tuesday of the month, starting in March. I mean, it's not set in stone, but we, they did a poll to see when we would have our meetings.
All right, thank you. And now staff report. Trevor, is there anything you'd like to share with us?
I think I covered, you know, the upcoming stuff and things I'm working on. In. In my upcoming, in my, you know, in the first agenda item. I will have a. Does I, I do plan on having a design review for. It's a tear down of an existing house and rebuilding it down on Scenic Drive. At the February meeting, still waiting for a little bit of information from them. So. Yeah, that that could get pushed back and then, you know, at least another two, maybe three in in March. So that are that are moving along as well, so.
Okay. Never, never dull moment. Okay. Future, future agenda, agenda items. We talked about all the twenty twenty one priorities. And then we also had the Tsunami Siren update and West Haven CSD Intertie. Any comments or things you guys want to add? Okay. All right, seeing none. Any final comments or questions? I know we've covered a lot. I don't usually ask at this point for that. But any, anything else that anybody wants to bring up real quick? Diane?
So it's the beginning of a year, so do we change chairman, vice chairman, Trevor?
Yes, probably we do, but let's wait till we get the the city council appointments. And then, yeah, I think we do that every two, two years after the elections.
Okay, I didn't know when, if it was every year or every two years, and Richard might know.
Okay. No, I'm happy to, I'm happy to continue to serve in any way that you all want me to. But if somebody else wants to take a turn, that's that's terrific. All right.
Well, I just know that Cheryl, that it always happens at the January meeting.
Yes, I I completely forgot.
We're two meetings in February. It's fine. You're doing fabulous.
Oh, no. I'm happy. I was doing the little happy dance over here. I'm fine with somebody taking over. No, it's been, it's been a pleasure, but yeah, it's great for everyone to take a turn. I love it. All right.
And you can do it from Arizona.
Yeah, today I can. Well, we're, while we're still virtual anyway. All right. Thank you, everyone. It was, we went through a lot tonight. I really appreciate it. And without the meeting is adjourned.